Attorney Attorney Board of Education meeting, October 7th. Here's your workshop agenda. It's pretty long, but a lot of the items you see on here are just matters of housekeeping, like Canyon Plant Reconciliation, SPOS budget. They just approved those. They got paperwork in front of them, not much to it. Inclement weather days, that's because of the hurricane stuff. Code red, you can see right there is a code red door they're going to present to the county, to the Board of Education tonight to discuss possibly putting that in in various entrances to the school system. Board retreat. Information items. There you go. And there's your stuff. The Homecoming Parade is Thursday evening at 6:00. I will be at the county, not in South County, but Sycamore Council Meeting, so I won't be there for that. And there's your stuff.
It is 6:00. We've got a good start. Appreciate everyone joining us tonight, staff, visitors we have this evening. If you would stand for our education pledge, please. We have Reverend Rich Johnson with us from Bethel Flatland Church. If you would, lead us in our education.
Heavenly fathers, we come and gather here tonight. Lord, we just ask for your favor to be upon this board. For this meeting, there's so much pressure that I know that some each and every one of them, decisions that they have to make and decisions they expect to make. God, I know, I know this board, and they don't do anything without coming to you. I know they're looking for your guidance, your direction. And Lord, just give them the insight, give them the knowledge, give them the ability, give them their Father. The Spirit is needed to govern over the children of Turner County, because they have every one of them in their heart. And God, what they do has an effect, not only on the children themselves, but it has effect on their parents, their grandparents, their relatives. God, it has an impact on the community as a whole. And so, we trust them, we look to them, we believe in them. But most of all, God, we stand behind them and their decisions and what they do. They're all, their Father, great men and women. And we just appreciate that you have burned their hearts to where they want to stand. And they want to come and take the position to be able to help for betterment, not for today, not for tomorrow, but Father, for the future. And we just appreciate each and every one of them. In your name, Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its essence.
We will review the public agenda for next Monday, October 14 regular meetings. Our call order and education questions. You can see the agenda in front of us. The students and staff recognition.
It's been an exciting few weeks. One of the things that I want you to be aware of is that we will have several recognitions on the Monday night meeting. So at the work sessions, we'll have our nutrition department, Mr. Gomez, they actually won the tray of the week for the state of Georgia from the Georgia Nutrition Program. So we'll be awarding them a certificate for that. We'll also have our school accreditation certificates and have our principals here to receive those framed class certificates for that. We'll have our Georgia Association of Alternative Education Teacher of the Year here, Corinne Clark, she won that award last week in Savannah, as well as the Georgia Exemplary Award recognition that we just received yesterday. So lots of great things going on. Our votes are really great things, and they're being voted out across the state, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Do we have any public participants? Next is items requiring board action as recognition considered. The minutes from last month to review and check those. Our work session is what we have, very early. Approval of the August 2024 financial statement. Anybody with those, have any questions about anything, anything that you'd like to bring Miss Paul, prepare. We have approval of the SPOS budget. Any questions? I'm trying to get it better.
It's down a little bit for the movement.
We have approval of the new middle high budget summary. Next, we have the Canyon Plant Reconciliation.
The one I have is for 22. Is that my 22?
No, that has to be a 5,000.
That's bigger than 2,000.
Starts with 21.
Did I upload it? Interesting, because the one I have, it should have been uploaded, says FY '25.
We'll get the correct receipt.
We have the approval of the H.R. recognition.
What is our current process by? Do we have, is there a central process? Or what is that?
To get the CDO processes in place.
So if a person had to, CDO, or they had to leave?
They would just do that, right?
So what would they, how would be our process? Comes to board office?
I would say they would go to transportation department, go to that office, or that board office, the top of the transportation director, and then we would take it from there after we get their interest.
We'll have the approval of the substitute teacher salaries.
Can you ship that to me now, so you can see the comparisons that we made of counties that were surrounding, what they paid their classified certified and their long-term certified? So we try to, we increase every single one, but we try to stay within the counties around us. The average for the RISA, just for your apply, the long-term certified is about $170, but we all propose them $200, just so we could have that incentive, so that there can be some additional people out there maybe thinking about maybe long-term subs, that might be an incentive for them, just to let us know.
Will that be less than what they currently, because this is based on, based on a certificate I've been given.
I will be honest with you, depending on the number of years of service and what level of master or specialist degree they have, there could be some potential people might gain $350, $400 a day if we paid them their daily rate, their certified rate. Now, if they want to come on as more than a long-term sub, we need to save a position to build throughout the entire school year, and we could work with $200 apps, and they would get paid that actual amount.
Are we still requiring our student to go through a training?
There is a subtrain offered by RISA, it's not required. We can make up that something that we could add to the process and procedures.
It is required. There's their certification.
As of when?
Yes, it is.
Is it just offered still one time a year then?
Okay. I know everybody's answer to that.
That's a different committee. The back, we match the salaries and rates to get more along with the counties around us.
The state of counties that join us are a lot lower.
Are you getting people to come for $80 an hour?
Any other questions? I don't know. A will be the approval of the CTA, the Global Educational Campaign with UDEF Tours. So how do they do with that last month? And this, for the table? Back for the remaining two, ask any questions?
Well, I have a lot of questions. This is an ag tour, everybody, I mean, is referred to as an ag tour?
No, ma'am, it's not an ag tour, just.
Everything on except for gotten has said AG tour. And I just wondered, okay, it says Spanish Pathways and Agriculture is a big industry, Has any of the ag teachers been involved in any of this plan?
No, ma'am, because it's specifically for the Spanish Pathway students. Ag is a big industry in our community, but it's not specifically for agriculture. They'll look at some ag things, but it's really a Spanish immersion tour where the students can earn, if they complete the final capstone project, they can earn at least half a credit for high school. For a small fee, they can actually earn a college credit on this particular tour. The company is prepared to offer one full scholarship for one of our students of our choosing, whether we do a contest or whatnot. And at the information, the students will receive a $200 coupon to apply towards their, towards their fees. But it's not specifically for ag as far as students, since most of our students finish the Spanish pathway with really no activities or application from that pathway. And it's one of the things that they look at when we do our monitoring and risk assessment, which is due in 2026. They look for global experiences for our students that we offer here in our county. So this will check that off that list when the state comes down to figure out, to look at what we're offering for our students.
Okay, so it will be offered to the Spanish?
For all of our students here at Turner County. High schools since Spanish, a foreign language is a requirement for graduation. Yes, ma'am.
So, okay, so what kind of fundraising will they have to do?
We would develop that plan once we get board approval. We'll have online fundraisers similar to the scores. We're not above car washes and fish fries and barbecues and cube plates or whatever we need to do to help our students get outside of the city limits and our county limits. A lot of our students don't have this opportunity.
How much is it per student?
It is, they lowered it to 3,200, a little over 3,200 a student. So with that coupon, it'll bring it down to 3,000 per student.
This, this will take 2026?
Yes, 2026.
So, so you're, so the juniors and seniors are kind of out of it?
Yes, ma'am.
So the freshmen and sophomores?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, my big thing is, I don't know the way the world is, whether we want to send children out of this country for one thing. And I know it's, it's supervised, but anyway, I still don't know, with kids can't raise money to go to the fair, you know, I think that's just a lot of money. The main point, though, I think is, our kids, a lot of our kids don't know anything about Turner County. They don't know anything about Georgia. They certainly don't know anything about Alabama or Florida, they've never been out of Ashford. And I think they need to be something here. Why not a field trip to, I don't know, this city?
That sounds good. We could, we could do both. I'm not sure it has to be, can't do it, just, I don't know if we could do both.
Well, I just, I just have a problem with this. Now, I'm not saying I couldn't vote for it if I had a chance to present on it, you know, if we had to, if something happens that you can't get all this done at one time, I mean, about in the two years, you know, can we call it off?
Absolutely.
I would personally be willing to, between now and June 2026, I'll contribute $100 to the state of North Carolina. The rest of the board approves to do this, I'll contribute.
Well, I just can't do that. Just think they've, they've been a piece of pride here, and I think there's more to learn. I mean, hey, I'm going to be impressed to live here, it's a beautiful site, but it's, it's not, it's also kind of questionable in places too.
I don't think the points are, I don't know, the students need to learn about this locally. I don't know that why we can't do it. We can do that now, I don't, if there's any reason it stops from coming up.
Yeah. There's a, why is it not even happening?
I can't ask that.
Have this down, pay for the government, the escorts. How would they, how would they, there is a pattern.
I know that we have one free for every, how many?
Six, one for every six. And Lisa Green has agreed to be that first chaperone, since she is fluent in Spanish. And she's our Spanish teacher. And I have agreed to pay for my own tuition to attend, because our child would be one of the six to sign up, so I would pay for mine out of my pocket.
So how many are we talking about?
It will be open to all of our students. In order for Lisa Green to attend, we need at least six students to sign up. So it'll be available for our students in grades nine and 12, or class of 23, class of 2026. So if six students sign up, then hers, her travel will be free.
Two we could go to?
Yes, and I would pay for my own ticket.
I think at this time, we can offer opportunities to our students to see something that you probably haven't had the opportunity to do. That's, I don't know that my intention would come out there. So I, personally, I would love to be in Mexico as a student and learn some other cultures and be, I understand your position, but I don't know. So that, I guess, that's your recommendation, about what hit yourself from you, saying it couldn't be.
He said you have to go to one for government.
Did you say one free for every six students?
One, yes, one free teacher for every six students, yes.
And they've reduced it since we met last month? And they've reduced it since we met last month?
No, it wasn't reduced since we met last month. They reduced it, because it's instead of an eight-day travel, it's a seven-day travel. They offered the free student scholarship since we last met.
Still is, have, have a little bit to raise that, you know, that kind of money. It's hard. I know that like car washes, you mentioned it, that's a little, I mean, parts of money at a time, couldn't, they're done that. But I would like that, you know, y'all assured us before that that wouldn't come out of any other part of money, since we're in such a.
No, it doesn't. I cause nothing to our school system.
Would there be any way for them, for you to report every, like, every six months, or every, do a fundraiser, how much money?
Absolutely.
How many you got signed up?
Absolutely.
That'd be interesting. Yeah, because not everybody will work to do it, you know, like, I was just saying. They are necessary. Put the trail block there.
Is there something in place that locks that price in? $3,000 per student?
Yes, it would lock it in, once.
Contract agreement?
Yes, it'll be a contract agreement, yes.
This takes place during the summer, so they will not visit any classes.
First week of June, yes, sir.
Ms. Jordan, do you have any more comments to add here?
No, it's all right, I don't have any more.
Thank you, thank you for your questions. Then we will have the approval of, uh, excuse me, how many, the approval of the Georgia C T I all leadership conference. It would be an overnight field trip to Columbus. Question about that?
This, this is the one they're doing here, is that Manny Cole?
Do we know how many is going, or?
I do not have a number. It's five, three boys and two girls. Three boys and two girls.
Three boys and two girls.
And I guess maybe your custom article, probably this, I guess maybe. Mandy Cole and Will Wilber will be the male chaperones.
Are we not getting those formed in?
Field trip?
Might as well tell us who's chaperoning.
They're probably in a line, I thought we'd come for this one. I can go back and do it.
Well, it's not gonna be the first, so.
Is that a pretty good one at any time?
You need overnight field trip after you're not ready. Overnight or right away.
I would pretend is the approval of the Titan Times newsletter and grab it, and sell it.
So one of the things that you noticed, uh, over the last six months, is we've really encouraged the branding aspect of the school system, and really been promoting all of the programs, athletics, extracurriculars, curriculum instructional lessons that are all within the classroom. We've made sure that everything that we put out there on social media, um, in any capacity, through the newspaper or online, um, is the best representation of Turner County. In order to do that, there has to be somebody behind the scenes making that magic. And so, um, one of the things that I did in April was I had with all our media specialists. Our media specialists are our roots on the ground. There are no two people in the schools that run the school's Facebook pages. Um, they make sure the graphics look good, they make sure the colors are correct, they make sure it has all of the, the information that it needs, so that it's eye catching, so that we can have our stakeholders collaborate with us and participate in what we're doing. At the district level, however, we didn't really have that. And so I asked this forty-four at the alternative school, um, but she actually has a very strong interest in the structural technology piece. And I asked her if she would be interested in doing something like that at the district level. And so since April, she has been doing that as needed, as asked. And I have sent her a lot of text messages, as you have seen on social media, because we've had a lot of things that had to, been posted and be announced sometimes in a short amount of timeframe, when we're talking about disasters and school closures. And, um, and she has always been right around here every day. One of the things that I told you about, I think I mentioned back in April or May, was having a district newsletter. Well, in order to get a district newsletter together, that is a huge undertaking, and she also proved to do that. And so since now, we've got our second edition of our newsletter, with that six months of incredible looking graphics. Um, I feel it's time to look at and how should we consider a position, um, a supplement position, um, similar by athletic supplements. The dollar amount is right in line with our other supplements as well. And it would be a person who actually is in the Titan Times newsletter and our social media graphics person. And that would be a two thousand dollar annual supplement, about maximum four to three.
She's the one who's been doing the Facebook, they look good.
Yes, they do, they look great. So you have a copy of the Titan Times newsletter for this month as well, and that.
Is she still a teacher?
She is, the bottom of that.
Item number eleven is approval of the president.
The board have requested, um, in last month, or the month before, board meeting, to actually look at the supplements, our athletic supplements, and our stipends are being paid, um, just to make sure everything is above board. And so, um, I had Miss Walker reach out to some of the programs out in that field. And we did a together contract with Miss Lydia Whitaker. She has agreed to come and audit all of those, um, programs for fifteen hundred dollars, um, with an additional rate of seven hundred and forty dollars that she needed to come and do the onsite business, which would include her travel expenses. So if the board is still interested in pursuing that, we have a contract to be signed.
Now, what she done did, um, what did you do?
Well, whenever we went and he was back, when did we approve stipends and supplements, June? So in the June board meeting, that question came up, that there were stipends and supplements possibly being paid, and maybe not being consistent across the board, or maybe sta- stipends and supplements have been paid for services that have not been completed. So this would be an audit of all of those, so that the board has complete transparency. If you think that is a priority, it's something she still wants.
Fifty hundred dollars a year?
Fifty hundred dollars for her to come and do it for this year. So there don't have to be a requirement.
So the board pressing question would be seven hundred and forty dollars. So if, if the information is given to Miss Walker, would you do it to show? I'm just thinking about all these dollars that we, we're just in at, and, and we got a school to finish paying for.
I mean, we, we don't want to spend the money, we can, we can just give less than they can do outside.
Absolutely, Miss Walker has all of that, and they're very organized and easy to take.
I'm just hoping to, you know, be a however, at least to go.
Yeah, we, we, I know, we, I know, it's, yeah, they got, 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 they got.
And Miss Walker can contribute to that, so.
Let me just say, that when the auditors come in every year, they pull all of the salaries, and they look at all of the supplement sheets, and they cross check to make sure that Liz Walker is getting the supplement for being CFO or assistant superintendent, and nothing else. So every year you get an audit, if there were issues with payroll, they would definitely, um, flag that. And then, of course, they would come back to us.
If that were.
Well, F Y twenty-four has, let me add to that, F Y twenty-four has not been audited yet. Um, that would come in the spring, so that was last year.
So, so last year was clear?
Well, no, last year, what we paid in F Y twenty-four, that has not been audited yet, because they run, run behind.
But you're saying the last audit?
The last audit.
Yes, yes, every audit's been clear. The, the other thing is, is we do have to turn all that in. Um, when we do state recording, C P I, um, all of the positions get put in C P I, uh, whether you're a parapro, whether, no matter what. And that's where they cross-reference your title, the job you're doing, you know, all that has to match up with what's being paid.
No wonder it takes them so long, ma'am. No wonder it takes them so long to get through the audits.
Yeah.
So we are a good shape, ma'am, we have confidence in Miss Walker and her.
I have all the confidence in her.
This would just be an extra layer of confidence, that that's possibly the question about the board, or if that's what you decide.
If the town board is not agreeing, I, I don't have a problem, not doing the audit, but it needs to be done. Not, this is not, this is Walker, this is just, everybody needs checks and balances.
I'm good, and, and whatever we come out with, I'm good, because I, I'm confident that, you know, everything is what needs to be.
Personally, uh, I'm, I'm hearing what I'm talking, so. She's saying no, I'm saying I'm here, as we hear. So if the board is agreeing, I, I can give you the best for the information I can do myself, uh, in the way I'm.
My thing is, if Liz says it's clear, it's goodness.
We have evidence, it's not clear, as I'm saying.
Well.
I don't want, just if we want to see that, it's not.
F Y twenty-four?
Right.
I agree.
So I'm just, I don't want us to wait until we get to that point, to see what issues we have, and suggest a plan.
I, 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 I guess I'm a parent during the. She gets the audit, or, or. I just don't see that, the many to prior.
What you have is a presentation, yeah.
I will add, her credentials are there, she, she does have her doctorate degree, she is a C P A, and I don't know if all that's on there, but she definitely has the credentials. And I do believe she could lay it out in such a manner that, that she could send it to Miss Ray, and, and we could present it. That would save that much money.
Item G is, uh, House Bill five-eight-one, I want to state it, please.
So as we've asked, we will keep this in the forefront of minds. Notice actually there is a guide with a timeline, suggested timeline and steps to follow. And we are right aligned with that September to December, um, as far as educating the board, education, educating our staff, um, getting the process of having those discussions on big steps, seeing if I would move my op in or op out. You'll also notice that there are some pros and cons that are presented for you, and very easy to, to read and understand, and talk to your constituents about, but that's what's going to be the hardest for people to understand, is how this relates to all the other carbon taxes and bill of rates and everything, and how that works together. Um, I will say that the pros and cons, I think there are four pros and four cons listed, with the considerations being that the community has to be, um, the highest star, the community needs it, authorities have to be always focused. We have to make sure that as we're weighing this community needs, we're also making sure we have the long-term physical health of our school system, and the pay fronts on us. So I will continue to provide information. We do have two trainings coming up, I have one on October the sixteenth, and you as a board, have one that you can participate in, if you choose, and cook family on over here with you. Um, we also have a potential board retreat coming up, and at that board retreat, you can have someone come and speak at that time, to give us more information and information.
Item H is flexibility, I think from whether it is with this, this contract.
One of the things that Turner County, um, has been, I, participating in, well, is the strategic waiver of school system, flexibility contract through the Georgia Department of Education. And what that flexibility waiver allows us to do is it allows us to waive the C G A rule, which is twenty dash two dash one sixty-eight C, which makes it so that you do have to make it up due to these draft, and those hundred and eighty instructional student days. But with us having the strategic waiver flexibility contract, we are exempt from having to make up those days if we choose not to. The state of Georgia actually gives us four days, it gives every school system in the state of Georgia four days, that they can choose not to make it up due to disasters, natural disasters, disasters and accidents, is how they rule it. Um, and then we have additional flexibility to go beyond those four days if we choose. I just wanted you to be aware, I mean, we've already had three days in first now weeks of school, so I wanted that to be something that you're aware of, um, if we need to modify the calendar, if we need to make up days at any point. Um, I would like to remind you that the high school is on a block schedule, so if we're trying to make up days to recoup that instructional time, if we don't make up the days during first semester, it really is, is a moot point, because those students have already moved on and left those classes for second semester. So just as an example, tacking on with end of the school year wouldn't help any of the students enroll in the, the classes that they're in right now. So we have options. It would include some fall breaks, and some Thanksgivings, and some Christmases, but there are options.
I don't say that.
I'm just saying, but I also want to make sure, you know, curriculum instruction will always be a priority for me. And with us being on a block schedule, which I am a fan, I'm a big fan of the block schedule, as far as how, how well students usually relate to that, and not curriculum instruction that you can get in in a certain amount of time, but for every one day that we're out, it's really equal to two days of missing instruction when you're on block schedule. So if we've actually missed three days of actual school days, then we miss six days of instruction as far as time.
I'm sorry, we don't come to that.
Next agenda item is a Code Red, is the Code Red presentation with Bill Daniels.
Bill Rex, that'll come up.
I'm trying to stay here, so I'll stay out of the way. Um, thank y'all for having us, we're gonna take just a few minutes, see time, where you get a lot of poor things to lose, we're gonna make this as quick as possible. I'm Jake Hager with Code Red Yard. Bill Daniels, Code Red Yard. Uh, what this product is, is it's an extra layer of security for the kids, um, versus an active shooter, an active assailant. I know everybody's aware of the shooting in Appalachia High School. Um, what Bill has designed here and sent out for a number of years, it's just really, really gotten popular in the last years, even with Appalachia, who've done this ten, forty days since then, it seems like. Um, what you're looking at is the inside of the classroom door. So most, most schools have tons of cameras, they have tons of electronic access. I put that in my whole career, last twenty years, that's what I did. When I saw Bill's product, what stands out is there's no electronics, there's no one-on-one failure, there's no reoccurring calls, and it's, it's so easy to use, it's, you don't have to have any additional training. So these shootings generally happen through the window. The kids are, the kids are in the classroom, the assailant looks through the window, punches the window out, shoots the window out, opens the handle, you know, or fires through the window. So part one is the teacher simply closes the window. It locks here from the inside, now the window is totally useless and can't be penetrated. There is a, an armored plating that goes here that makes it bulletproof, this is a non-bulletproof version. We don't think that it's needed because the door is not bulletproof. All we're trying to do is limit the people that can see in the window, and limit hands and other objects coming through the window. The second part is the, the lock piece that lives in this box beside the door. It simply comes out, the teacher needs it, and slips it out of his window. Then your door is totally speared out, so it can't be kicked in. So two separate parts, the window shield, and then the lock. The third part is the glass around your door, which we've also designed a piece that hinges shut to close that door. It stays shut all the time, that window looks similar to a trophy case, you know, just to keep people from kicking it out by passing a door cover. So that's the product in a nutshell, like I said, what, what stands out is there's, there's no electronics, there's no internet, there's no reoccurring costs, there's no maintenance. And what we feel like is, is with that shooting, you know, every school, it's on their mind, and it's on the kids and the teachers' mind, too. About every school I've been to, they draw a red line across the floor in the classroom. If you're on this side, it can't be seen, if you're not, you know, that, it's not real reassuring. Um, this gives that teacher the ability, you know, that she can secure the classroom quickly and easily. This gives that teacher the ability, you know, that she can secure the classroom quickly and easily, you know, at least that piece of mind that she's okay.
Where is the lock box? That, that side of the door?
Yes, this, this just lives as close to the door as it can. It's locked until there's an issue, the key unlocks, the piece comes out of that door.
So she's got to have that key with her.
There's another option too. You can key this to match the key that opens her classroom already. Or you can just hang this lock on the wall with a ladder, so it's not in a box, you just open it and grab it and set it. We just carry the box just to hold it in.
I'm just saying, no, the box locked up, I can see a kid getting it and keeping it out of here.
Right. That's why we like it locked.
I mean, they do that, he's locked that up.
That's why we like it locked in the box, right. Some systems want it just hanging there, some want it in the box. You know, it's an option that you guys can have. Colors come in school, colors gray, red, obviously, you know, whatever your preference is.
So, so this, I read, this is the home door?
Yes, yes. This is, you're a teacher in a classroom or a kid in a classroom.
I mean, this is what you're selling us is the home.
No, 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 we're just selling these.
Just a little red, right?
Yes, you have the door. The other piece of it is that you're a person offender. On the other side, you know, if there is an incident, that's where your offenders are running down, always seeing this. And know that, you know, I don't need to waste time up here, you know, I'm on my mission to, you know, to stop the shooting or whatever. We say it from the start, we've shown this to a ton of emergency maintenance, you know, agencies, and that's what they're thinking about, is quick response, quick response, quick response. In part, not all these other ones, they have to get classroom by classroom, clearing the classrooms and, you know, hopefully it takes time. You know, if they see this, they know, that's not one that you have to worry about.
God, how many shooters in that room?
There's not a lot you can do about that. I mean, in any scenario, there's just nothing you can do about that.
I think the last time, I think you presented this to us before, the only drawback we had, I think, was information was given to us that the Farm, State Farm Marshal didn't prove the problem. I think that's why we still cleared. That access has changed or...
What about the Fire Marshal?
Yes.
We've got a letter that, which if anyone were to actually, when they were going to change this product, beginning of the...
Fire marshal, I didn't hear.
That was our big drawback.
The first time I was here, this, I had, I had not developed this product. The product, what y'all remember was hanging. This right here is now reachable. If, if you were to be the teacher and be excitement of the whole situation, cause you'd pass out, have a heart attack, whatever, you know, unfortunately. While that man's out there in that hall, you gotta make it so they can get him under control within that time. Maybe the kid couldn't, the kids don't understand how to open it up and let them in. They could go with a special tool, it fits these bolts that was slacked on the door. From the other side, they can spin them loose and this whole thing will fall to the floor and they'll walk in the door and that's it at that time. That's, that's what y'all remember. And, and one thing that, that we're proposing to do in, in the elementary school is all your glasses around. The school doors will be shielded now, so. It'll be a system that every panel, we'll, we'll, we'll put a panel on it. And for cleaning purposes, we'll be able to undo it. Like Ms. Ray and I was talking, probably once a year, want to clean the glasses or whatever. Nobody ever thought we could get to this point when there was designing schools with glass everywhere, but it's here and something's got to be done about it. You can't just leave them with all that glass. So it's going to close up the rooms, it's going to close up your view, but better that than to be at the day to sleep in corners. That's our presentation. We appreciate y'all, if you got any questions, feel free.
Is this quote seventy-four doors, is that LVT?
Yes.
Okay. We're not talking about the new study.
No.
Thank you.
It's fine. Thank you. Next we have our board retreat planning, because the dates roll around a couple times.
I think we've narrowed it down to October twenty-fourth, twenty-ninth, or November fourteenth. So let me beg to work for it.
I think it's twenty-ninth.
So it is the fourteenth and twenty-fourth?
I didn't want to.
October twenty-fourth or November fourteenth.
Okay, his information, item is for the board. Perfect, for two thousand and forty, yes, the board recognition.
Again, congratulations for all the hard work the team have put in last school year. What you've done for the Turner County School System, the Georgia School Board Association recognized that, and ordered you accordingly, so it's well deserved. We will have that certificate presented, we will have the press release go out next week. Okay, so our next agenda item is our cyber security update, which sort of happens in October because of cyber security awareness month. So I asked Mrs. Thomas if she would give you an overview of what we're doing in the area of cyber security. I know it's a big ticket item as far as you hear a lot about it in news, you hear a lot about it in media, and sometimes it's hard to understand that information. So she is presenting that in a very low-tech way.
Tonight?
But we can give you a high-tech way if you would like, yeah.
All right, just real quickly, since the hurricane a couple days ago, our attacks on our firewall have increased drastically. We're seeing anywhere from a hundred to two hundred and fifty deaths per day. So we're really under a tight, hot and heavy right now. Once things settle down, I do expect that betrayal off, that that's pretty common within the industry with natural disasters and holidays. Anything external forces that may cut your guard down, they're going to come after you a little bit more. Two things I'll share with you tonight, we are doing phishing, so we're sending all of our employees emails periodically throughout the month. We're trying to catch them. We want them to click on something, we want them to enter their personal information. So that we can have that trained with them about where things went sideways and can kind of handle that in a controlled environment before it becomes a problem for the district. We had hundred and eighty emails that went out this month. A hundred of those emails were opened and we had two individuals within the district. That clicked on something inside of those emails, so they took it a step further. We did not have anybody share any information, give any passwords, say any key or code, so that's, that's good. I'm pleased with that. We do do a little remangation type thing that pops up that says, hey, this is bad, this is where you went wrong, and we will customize that as we go. Those are completely automated. The topic changes every month, so one month it could be an athletic thing, one month it could be a free gift card. It could be college admissions, so that changes, completely randomized as far as the date and the time. So my department doesn't even know when those are going out, so those go to us as well. The second thing is Bonsai, the state has provided that for us and it's just a way for, to kind of monitor what the outside world sees. And that score is, there is so much about a credit score, the longer the bad stuff sits out there, the worse it gets, the more bad things you have, the lower that score gets. And we're currently sitting at a seven, seven, and I'll have those papers for you to look at next week. Right now, their ranking us is better than eighty percent of their educational peer group. So we do have a couple things that, that my department is actively working on and we do monitor both of those platforms and kind of tailor what we do in-house. They still knows along with some other things.
Do we store any student data, data on the site, server, is it?
We do, we have servers up here.
One last question, any of the vendors that we work with, we require them to have soft objects?
Any other questions? All right, so as far as our construction updates, we have some exciting things to share. The first is that the grand staircase have been installed and the concrete has now been poured on it, so it is complete. There are going to be fireproofing, we complete on that lower section, will be done, actually that was completed at our last meeting, so that would have been completed last week. For building twelve hundred, the first floor fireproofing is complete. You'll notice as you drive by, all the interior and exterior walls are ongoing. The roofing is complete for building twelve hundred. And also just to let you know, if you're curious, the car painting didn't have any impact on any of our buildings. There was nothing damaged, nothing, but satisfied in any way. For building thirteen hundred, the miscellaneous steel supports, all of those extra ones, the decking is complete. And the roofing actually started at the end of last week and will take three to four days, so it should be completed by the end of this week. Those are the updates. I'm going to get you some updated renderings. Y'all asked about the renderings with the paint colors. I don't know if the renderings you saw earlier have the actual paint colors in it. But Kyle was working on that, as we speak. And the only other big announcement is that on October twenty-first, we lose this parking lot. So we've got this parking lot for about two more weeks and then we'll have to start going around, hopping around in every side of the building. Some questions about construction? They told me they could give you paint samples, because the paint chips are not the ones that we see in stores. Their, their paints are actually about the size of the sheets of paper, but I thought it would probably be more relevant to use these solid and renderings, so just, I don't know. This is exciting walk.
We can tell, I'm setting our...
I think I told them right up front.
They're going to be green.
No, no.
Blue and yellow, please.
If y'all want to do another walk for the guys, it's amazing how much it's changed since we built up the thing to the top of the house there. Now the center blocks and the walls are formed up and you can see the classrooms, you can see the offices, the entire cafeteria area, all of that's blocked out. So it's, it's taking shape.
I was just noticing Friday night, it's all ended up.
It is.
I don't tell them that much, but...
All right, I wanted you to be aware, the Character Education Grant, which is the LEAR program that we implemented this year, was the one that we actually got. Nine percent of it's actually funded through the state. We actually don't have to pay a portion of that until it's the last year, it's either year three or year five. So we will be doing an expenditure of a hundred and seven dollars, a hundred and seven thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety-three, but that's part of that program where it's provided to us. We're not having to actually pay it after the local funds. I just wanted you to be aware of that expenditure that's been made. We wouldn't give you enough data on the LEAR program. I'm sure the principals would love to talk to you about it, but they're going to be here on Monday night. One of the things that they're doing at the beginning of every single class period is some type of character head program, some type of different, well, it's a different topic each day. And a lot of times the topic will coincide with something else that's going on in the school that day or that week, so that they see the relevance of it. And the students have responded well and I really enjoy the lessons.
This is the one?
It's all, all great, guys.
All great, guys.
Will you circle back to the transportation updates?
Did I speak over that? I apologize. Yeah, transportation updates, I did request it by board as well to find out maybe some information on how our transportation program runs. And we did find out, I talked with Mr. Riggins, we do have the mileage tracking forms, they're not being used to be sent, they should be, so we're putting that as a higher priority. Right now, as far as the updates are concerned, they know how much gas they use and how much diesel they use, and that's really the only thing they're tracking. So we're going to take that to the next level. We're going to make sure that we know the routes, the length of time, so that would make sure the gas and the diesel that's flowing out matches the mileage that's coming in. So we'll get those tracking forms, so that we're able to present them to you if you need them or need that.
I seen that app, I seen that app somewhere, I don't know where I seen it, it, it tracked the rocks, but it also notified parents, you know, it was two minutes away.
There are several programs out there like that. I would say, we use that in my former system and it's been over really well as far as being received. However, I would say bad data in, bad data out, and so if you have addresses that aren't accurate, if you've got, if you've got location in the morning, it's not the same as the drop-off in the afternoon. The app is not as, as user-friendly as it could be. So if you keep that information updated, it would be a great app for our system.
Did parents input that data or did they have...
It's provided to us and then we input it at the school level. So it would be those student information forms that we send out at the very beginning of the school year that go home to the code finder. When they return all of that, all of those forms back, that's their post-updated information at that moment. But we know that information changes, addresses change, phone numbers change, and sometimes that information is not included into the system. So yes, that would be a great app for us to put in some future. And we do have a workshop coming up in December, that's the eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. That's the GSSA, GSVA Annual Conference. So I just want to make sure you have those dates on your calendar. We'll get you registered and get all of your information in for you. Another transportation update is that state DOT completed their bus inspection last Tuesday, October first. All of our buses passed inspection by the state DOT inspectors, so Mr. Riggins was very excited about that, excited about the work that they've been doing in the transportation department and everything, but just seeing where it moved it. I wanted to make sure you had the updated athletic calendars in your packets. You've got the middle school basketball and you have the high school hockey team. We do have an updated high school football, but it was just emailed out, so I'll get that to you. Just for those of you that didn't know, some of the dates changed, some of the games will move, and we want to make sure that everybody's got it, clean this calendar. If y'all still see anything like mine, it's all scribbled on the face of all the changes that we've had tonight, so we'll get that to you on Monday. And then you also have, like I mentioned, the Titan Times Newsletter. This is actually best in beauty electronically, it has some of our books, like hardcover things, so we'll get that and we'll continue to work on the printing format of it. This is just our second draft in progress. But if you want to actually follow the links and all the different resources that are available, I would suggest you look at it on our website and on my Facebook page. And then the only other thing that's been updated, in addition to doing a Titan Times monthly newsletter, we're also still doing a Coach's Corner monthly newsletter. That's under Starcey Rain, her teacher support special, so she was also put that second one out for the month of October. She released it today. It's all posted on social media by tomorrow. One of the things that it provides are instructional curriculum lessons, highlight some of the things going on in our classrooms with our teachers and our students. It also spotlights teachers and students that are doing exceptional things inside and outside of the classroom. And she finds grants, classroom grants that teachers could take advantage of, and so it's a plethora of resources. And so far, it's gotten a lot of great feedback.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so Homecoming Parade is coming up. Weirdly homecoming week, and that's an exciting time. So for those of y'all that are able to make it, our Chevrolet has offered us a vehicle to run in in the parade. And it's a electric.
Electric car.
It should be pretty fancy, so we have signs for that, so it's six-six, so we would love to have all of you participate. The parade starts at six, but they asked us to be there at October twenty, for the lineup, and I'll get you the details about where it is, once we know where it starts. Anytime Fitness, I don't know if it's ever been a topic or something that's been brought up in our county, but it was shocking to me when I moved here that there was not a gym or any type of facilities for community people to use, for school system employees to use, so one of the people, one of the groups was the Anytime Fitness group that actually sponsored and helped with our confrontation when we kicked off the school year. So I kept in touch with them, even though they're located out of Tifton and have other offices, they are willing to come here and possibly use some of our facilities, use some of our resources, and help us. Send trainers, send instructors, and then, you know, obviously we could do some type of payroll production, some type of way so that our employees could take advantage of that in an easy way, so that our teachers and our staff, and also have ways to increase and improve their mental health, provide all the opportunities that we have that are possible for our area. And I know we are limited sometimes geographically, but they're willing to come here, and willing to explore that opportunity. So they put together a survey, I'll be sending that survey out probably in the middle of this week, and we'll see what kind of feedback we get, I just wanted you to be aware that that's something that we're exploring. One of the things that we have received from our Community Engagement Strategic Planning Session, it was held on September the, what was that, twenty-seventh, September seventeenth, whenever we held that. We did the squad analysis with our community engagement partners, we had over forty people present for that. I was told by several people within the community that they have not had anything like this for years, some said ever that they were aware of, but it was a great way for the community members and our stakeholders to have that one-on-one interaction with our employees, with the GSVA folks that were leading it, for actually us to be able to drill down, figure out what that root cause and evidence is, and where we're at with our strengths and weaknesses, and our opportunities and our threats. Just to give you an overview of all of the feedback that we got, that we received, we found out that according to that group that was present that day, those forty folks, they thought that one of our top strengths was that we have been doing a great job with good communication. So that's through our partnerships with the wiregrass, through social media, for sending things on through the schools each day, and through emails and embedded campus and through our house system. So good communication was what they identified as our biggest strength. Our weakness in our area of improvement, they all, I think of the votes that came in, uh, the majority of the votes landed on parent involvement as being in an area of improvement, which I think we all agree with, there's no way that we would ever have a maximum amount of parent improvement, we can always improve in that area. And it's true, there are more in everything that we do. For opportunities, they ask that we engage more with our local businesses, we can take our local businesses and implement them more into what we're doing in the schools and vice versa. And also, they set our opportunities, we've got, we've done a great job for our dual involvement, we do things with our college and junior academy and the programs that we're offering to the pathways. As far as threats, attendance issues with teachers and students seem to be on everybody's mind, so we know that we've already got processes and protocols that we're putting in place and incentives. That's a big push for this year, for twenty-four, twenty-fives to improve student and teacher attendance, and now that it's been identified as a threat, it just makes it an even higher priority. But I'll get you all those updates, I'll get you those summaries. We also had the online survey that was on our website, was on our Facebook page that GSVA provides for us. Ms. Lenita has actually been out of the office with some family issues, so she's not having those summary results, so as soon as they're able to summarize the online results, I'll get those to you.
What day will we have, we only have a second meeting right before.
That's another thing, this Lenita will be scheduled on our second meeting, that'll start training team sessions. And then once we've had the first planning team session, then we'll come back and do another community engagement where we're bringing everybody together on next steps. As far as updates with SROs, I wanted you to know that we actually do have a substitute SRO. One of our officers actually did have to have surgery, so he's out for at least eight to twelve weeks, and we didn't want one of our schools to not have the SRO presence that we were so used to having, such as Casey Nixon has been hired as a substitute SRO, with the potential for it possibly, you know, become more permanent if one of our SROs decides to retire, which is something that's been talked about and looked at. And so, we will give you updates on that, but this is her second week, her first day of her second week, she was in elementary school last week, getting that experience. This week, she's in the middle of high school, so we're kind of letting her see everything that's going on, and then we'll decide on a place that maybe we need to shift some people around. She's done a great bit so far, and good luck with her, and she can highly recommend it. Which leads us to our safety and security, I just wanted you to be aware of everything that has been going on, and not just because we have our, you know, safety and security in our program presentation tonight, but we have processes and protocols that are in place, we follow them to the letter, if there's anything that happens within the school, we make sure that we follow those, so that everyone is covered and everyone is treated carefully. But most importantly, that we're being consistent, consistency is that everybody's being treated the same when it comes to the events. I will say, my personal opinion is that if there is a incident that occurs during school day or prior to the school day starting, and it doesn't disrupt school in any way, at no point does anyone ever any harm, any threat, there's no weapons involved, and in order to that extreme, we're going to keep teaching, we're going to keep learning, we're going to keep curriculum instructions that they just every single time. We're always going to notify the community, we're going to make sure that the information gets out there, like we know, I mean, it's just human nature, if that information was to go out sooner before the investigation is complete, there could be enormous information that's put out, and we'd never want that to happen, and it would also disrupt instruction, so I want to make sure that that's, that's not done, anywhere we can possibly avoid it. We did have an assembly today, we actually have four assemblies today, and it's Derek Andy Hester, and we had a team of them, and they did a great job. We had two assemblies at elementary school, we broke those groups up, the upper kids and the smaller kids, because obviously it's different talking points, we have different age groups. And then we had a middle school assembly and a high school assembly, and it was very well received, the kids were very respectful, they were very attentive, and I hope that they were listening, I hope that they heard the information that was presented, and how important it is to make good choices, and we live in a time now where there are things you just can't jump about and say anymore. And that's all about that, unless you have questions?
I have one question, you got something to do?
Oh, yes, Ms. Walker has some information that she can share about that.
Yeah, as you know, that, um, we are required to, with the banks, you, FDIC will cover through collateralization up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, as you know, we have more money than that in our accounts, so we have to work with the banks and go back and forth to make sure that everything is being collateralized. That is a little bit of a burden on the bank, and, and just tracking it, so when the auditors come in, we have to work through the banks, and they have to go back and pull records for a year. The entrefy, what that does, is it is an insurance on all of our money, and what they do is they send the money out to different, not necessarily sending it, send it out, but they put so much in each bank that has FDIC coverage, so that another bank can, you can put two hundred and fifty thousand here, and it's covered two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand here, so it's covered at all times. And no one is having to watch it at the bank to make sure that they're on top, because with our deposits fluctuating and our accounts going up and down, that's a lot. So it is no charge to us, um, I do think, and, and we will get monthly statements to show where all our funds are and that it is collateralized. So when the auditors come in, now I don't have to call the bank, and they don't have to find someone to pull all that information together. I will have those monthly statements, and boom, I can present it to the auditors. Now, I did ask the bank, how is this no charge? Well, because if they're collateralizing, it costs them money to collateralize our, our money, because they have to go out and search for bonds and all of that. So therefore, the time and effort it saves them, they pass that on to us at no charge, so it's a win-win for the community, and for the bank, and for us. And so, we're just, I respectfully asking that we move in this direction, which is a much cleaner, streamlined, and we know every red sin is insured. And when it's insured, you don't have to have it collateralized, but it is insured by FDIC. I will say, our Colony Bank account, they use a pool, so they pool the funds with other banks, so that, you know, and, and I did notice after seeing this through South Georgia Bank, I went out to Colony Bank to sit, just double check, you know, because I knew they use the pooling system, well, they also, um, they also offer the entrefy. So, it just is a win-win for the community, win-win for us, and the record keeping, I like to have all the records right there, so when the auditors walk in, I can pull that up, there it is. And then that's less time, I mean, having to reach out to the bank and ask them their folks to pull that information together for us.
We really, yeah.
You really don't, but I did want it mentioned in the minutes, so that if auditors ask, yes, that y'all were aware that we were making a change, and we haven't done that yet, and so of course, we brought it to you. Insurance is always there.
It was three thirty, Mary.
Yeah.
She acted up before the game, he stayed in line.
I can take it to you later.
You'll see her before I do.
Yeah, I'll see her first thing in the morning. Yeah, she may be outside.
Where, where, no crowd, it's Saturday. I don't want Kirby to be upset with me because I'm not loud. I'm glad I'm being a little bit.
I'll say, I don't know which one, I don't know which one was eighty-eight dollars for.
Y'all know the school board is still up here discussing board school business, the meeting is adjourned, so when they do something like that, after the meeting's adjourned, they continue to discuss school business, that is illegal under Georgia law.
He would take him off, he would take him on, stand there.
You know, but, I said. He said, I already got four thousand. And he said, four hundred and something miles wide, the car is only three hundred and something miles.
Alright, looks like they're going to wind it up, so we're out of here. Good night, everybody.